Folks, Black Star Network is here.
I'm real revolutionary right now.
Support this man, black media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Thank you for being the voice of black America, Roland.
Be black, I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, there's difference between Black Star Network and black owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be black owned media and be scared.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig? Today is Monday, October 17th, 2022. Coming up on Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on the Black Star Network. We're live in Valdosta, Georgia. Today is first day of early voting in the critical elections here in this state. Midterm elections are happening all around the country. Early voting is starting, not just here in Georgia, but other places as well. We'll talk with folks here in Valdosta about this campaign where of course T.C. Abrams is facing incumbent Brian Kemp for the Gomorrahio race. And of course Senator Raphael Warnock is facing Herschel Walker. He wants to win a full six-year term to the United States Senate. So we discussing that race also, folks. The police shooting with Mississippi teen continues to raise lots of questions. The family of Jaheem McMillan, they want answers as they plan for his funeral this weekend. We'll talk with his mother as well as their attorney, Ben Crump. Folks, remember two weeks ago, we told you about the Kansas City Missouri Police Department saying they had no evidence of a serial killer targeting African Americans. That was reported by the Kansas City Defender. It looks like a black woman says that she escaped from the basement of a white man and said several of her friends were murdered by that man. We will talk with Ryan Sorrell, the founder and editor of the Kansas City Defender with regards to what's happening there. Kevin DeLeon is one of the two remaining Latino council members in Los Angeles who refuses to resign after making racist comments captured on audio tape. Well, yesterday, Black Lives Matter Los Angeles began camping out at his home. We will talk with Malina Abdullah, who is the leader of Black Lives Matter grassroots. Also, folks, we'll show you a viral video of a special needs black man in Milwaukee, who was being held captive by a white man accusing him of stealing a bike. Well, black protesters showed up at that white man's house. He wasn't too happy, but he caught that heat. We'll show you that as well, folks. Overcovering that and lots more, it is time to bring the funk on Roland Martin Unfiltered of the Black Star Network. Let's go. It has been nearly two weeks since Gulfport, Mississippi police shot and killed 15-year-old Jaheem McMillan and his family. They want answers and some of that may come when police release the body cam footage of the shooting. Witnesses say that McMillan was walking out of a store when the officer shot him. Police say the teen had a gun. Witnesses say he was unarmed. The conflicting stories push protesters to demand that police have transparency by releasing the body cam footage taken the day that he was shot. Now, on Saturday, Black Lives Matter Mississippi and the Mississippi Rising Coalition held a rally to demand justice for Jaheem. Mississippi Public Safety Director Sean Tendo says footage will be released to the public once Mississippi Bureau of Investigation analyzes the footage. Civil rights attorney Benjamin Crump and Jaheem's mother Katrina Mateen are here joining us right now. Glad to have both of you here. First of all, Ms. Mateen, sorry for your son's loss all too often. We have to talk to mothers like yourself in these situations. First and foremost, again, this took place two weeks ago. How were you alerted as to what took place between Gulfport, Gulfport Police and your son on that fateful day?
A friend of the family called me and said that my, that my son has been shot.
Obviously, it is still a lot to deal with. You are in the midst of having a planned his funeral for this weekend. I want to pull up Ben Crump now and Ms. Mateen, I'll give you an opportunity to certainly gather yourself. And it's very difficult, obviously, to have to talk about these shootings when it's still so fresh and you're still having buried your son. Ben Crump, I'm trying to understand for them to say that they're waiting to analyze the footage, it happened two weeks ago. How long does it take to analyze body cam footage?
You know, Roland, as I watch Katrina just agonize over this tragedy, her 15-year-old son killed by the very people who are supposed to protect and serve her. We know, Roland, this is the playbook. They delay, delay, delay in hopes that people will forget about it and they can sweep it under the rug. But thank God for Katrina, her family, and the activists demanding transparency. We're going to file a public records lawsuit to release the video. Now states like Mississippi and Alabama, their Supreme Courts fight to say you don't get any transparency, but they cannot deny people like you, Roland, and us continuing to fight in the court of public opinion to say if you have nothing to hide, why don't you release the video? Because we all know, Roland Martin, we've been doing this too long, that if that video showed Jaheem with a gun, they would already released it and it'd be all over the news by now.
This reminds me of the case that you were involved with in Houston again, where cops said one thing and once the body cam footage came out, it showed that the young man did not have a gun and how the police rolled up. And so you're absolutely right. Again, we showed the video last week of the police chief sharing his information. But again, to sit here and say we're two, almost two weeks away. The family is preparing to bury this young man and they still have not shown that. And you're right, it's very simple. If, if he had a gun, as they say it, as they say he did, then the video should clearly show that.
Yeah, and Roland Martin, you know, attorney Monique Preston and I, we argued and fought to get the video released in Houston, Texas with Joshua Feets. We're going to have to do that with Jaheem McMillan. But the other thing that is just outrageous is once they had shot him in the head, they then put him in handcuffs. You know, why didn't they try to give him medical assistance? Why do they have to treat our children like animals? I mean, clearly at that point, he's no threat. He's no way putting you in fear. Why don't you try to help save his life, preserve his life? Why aren't you using your training and professionalism for this black life? Why do you treat it as if it has no value? Where is the humanity? And I think that's why Katrina is having such a difficult time when she processes it all. And we just have to continue to pray for the family and fight for justice for Jaheem.
Katrina, obviously, whenever these cases happen, police, they have one perspective. They have to try to frame who the individual was for folks who don't know. Tell them who your son Jaheem was.
Jaheem, he's a lovable person. He was a good brother and he loved his friends. My son, my son wasn't, he was not disrespectful.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to. I want, I want folks to understand that again, when these things happen, Ben Crump, these are human beings. These are individuals who are children, who are nephews, nieces, cousins, siblings, and they're simply not just another random case. And I think it's important for folks to understand that they also go beyond as being a hashtag. And so, and I totally understand it is very difficult for Katrina to have to talk about her son in the past tense, if you will, because he's lost his life. And that's one of the points that I consistently say, Ben, you can't come back from death. And, and too often we've seen where force was used, unfortunately, taking the lives of many young black men. And that's why it is important for police to be forthright and honest about what took place at that particular convenience store that led to the death of Jaheem McMillan. Ben, final comment.
Roland, thank you for continuing to put a spotlight on Jaheem McMillan. Obviously Gulfport Police is acting as if he doesn't matter, but you can see to Katrina, he matters to their family, to their community matters. And thank God, Roland Martin, for you and the audience of people all over America who watch your show every day, especially black people. Let's continue to fight to get to truth and transparency. So hopefully we can get justice for Jaheem. That's what Katrina wants more than anything, that her son's death will not be in vain and that these who killed him, I mean, he's 15 years old, for God's sake, should be held accountable for taking him from this earth far, far too soon.
Indeed, indeed. Ben Crump, we truly appreciate it. Katrina, thank you so very much for joining us. Again, I know how difficult this is for you and your family. And we certainly will continue to cover this story and to see it through and to get the transparency and justice that you and others are looking for. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm going to bring in my panel right now, Dr. Julian Malvo. She's the dean of the College of Ethic Studies at California State University, Los Angeles. Dr. Amakongbo Dabinga, professorial lecturer at the School of International Service at American University. And Georgia State Representative, Renita Shannon. Glad to have all three of you here. Julian, I'll start with you. What is strange to me, and Ben makes a great point, that again, this shooting takes place almost two weeks ago. Georgia Bureau of Investigation analyzing the footage. We're talking about the video, talking about body cam footage, like literally it can be uploaded immediately. Let's say you look at it in 24 or 48 hours. I think about the case, I think it was in Columbus, Ohio, where the young girl actually had stabbed another young girl. And the story began to circulate very quickly that she was charged, but she was shot and killed by the cops. She was charged by the cop. She did not have a knife. Well, Columbus, Ohio Police had that video up within 12 hours to shut down all the speculation. It's not like it takes two weeks.
Roland, I think you made the appropriate point in your conversation with Ben Crump. If there is nothing to hide, why hide? Clearly, there is something to hide. There's something fishy about this. And we know it's more than fishy. It's just GD murder. This young man, 15 years old, not even beginning to experience life as he might, killed and who knows why. All we know is that police have a license to kill black people. Few of them have consequences for their actions. A few do. If you look at that cute face, I mean, come on now. This is absurd. Look at the innocence in his face. But this, these so-called officers of the law have a license to kill. And our job has, has to be to push back. And you, Roland Martin, have done an amazing job of lifting up these cases because if we didn't lift them up, they'd get swallowed. You know, black life is cheap for these people and their life needs to be cheap for us. They need to be arrested, tried, prosecuted, and then thrown up other somebody's jail. This is absurd.
Amakongbo, it is, I mean, when you think about this here, I mean, you have a 15-year-old shot and killed almost two weeks. He hasn't been buried yet. You still don't have answers as to what took place. It is important for police, I get investigations, but it is important to be able to show what took place because if the video shows he had a gun, well, then that means what those witnesses say simply isn't the case. We've seen other examples where that took place, where witnesses say, oh, no, person didn't have a gun. Then we saw the video. We see on the flip side where police said somebody had a gun and then the video showed that was not the case.
Yeah, and you know, to be quite honest, I'm still gathering myself because you know, it's just hard to see the black woman's pain like that, just, just, just live and raw. And what you're saying is absolutely right, Roland. If the police across the country will do anything at any time to show that they were on the right side. And so when they let something like this persist for weeks, we're already naturally suspicious of what's going on. And when they do this, they actually do have this mentality of that for some reason, we're going to forget. And if events, at the very least, since George Floyd and even earlier than that, with cases like Sandra Blanda and the like, they should know by now that, that we're not going to forget, we're not going to let this go because of the Black Star Network. We're able to keep the pressure on these organizations. And when I think about Jaheem, when I think about his family, you know, my son just celebrated his eighth birthday yesterday. My, my second child just started ninth grade, same grade as Jaheem was in. This is every child, every family, anywhere in our community. It doesn't matter what your economic status is. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter anything. We have all seen this too much. And so this police department needs to understand that these lives matter to us. They are our children, our sons, our daughters, our siblings, our parents, our aunts and uncles. And really, at the end of the day, we also have to make sure two things. Number one, the Justice Department gets involved as these people continue to walk slowly with this. And also, Roland, we have to politicize this because we have to remember that if we can get this house control or maintain house control and increase our representation in the Senate, then we get that George Floyd police reform bill and we'll have more teeth to be able to go after these departments who slay our family members like this.
Representative Shannon, we have seen where a number of states have actually passed laws making it difficult for people to be able to access body cam footage. I mean, this is one of those things that is critically important in order for the public to trust what we hear from police because at the end of the day, many of us cannot trust what they say.
Absolutely. And the thing that the public also has to do is start asking the people that you elect what they think about how much power police have and how much police accountability there needs to be and what is their specific plan? Because I can tell you, both Democrats and Republicans vote every single day to give police more power. And that is, you know, so we cannot just assume that with the right election, something will be done about this issue. Most elected officials don't even want to talk about police accountability issues. I know because I've been talking about it for years and it's been pretty lonely talking about the accountability that we need to see for police officers. My heart completely breaks for this family. I think too many people don't realize how police murder and police brutality really destroys the lives of countless families and it's disproportionate in our community. But the question that we need to answer here right now, I think this conversation honestly has the wrong focus because the question should be, why did police shoot Jaheem? That should be the question, not whether or not he had a gun. And the reason why I say that is because we see countless mass shootings where young white men, when police arrived to the scene, they are, they've already been made aware that these young white men have killed 10, 12, five individuals, have weapons that are generally seen in wartime, weapons that are seen that the, that the military would use. And they still managed to take these young men and these young white men in without a scratch and they get to see their day in court. So I don't want us as black people to continue the conversation of whether or not this person had a gun or not, because we know the reality is police are capable, when they want to, of bringing in folks regardless of the type of weapon that they have and also whether or not they have a weapon. So the question that needs to be answered here is why did they choose to shoot Jaheem? Because that's what they did. They chose to shoot him. They chose to end his life. And this is why I'm so grateful that you're covering this story, Roland. You always cover these stories and it's important because the media does not want to cover how often this happens and this happens a lot more than people realize.
All right, folks, hold tight one second. We come back, a black woman escapes from the basement of a white man in Kansas City, who she says he raped and tortured her and that several of her friends did not get out alive. We'll talk with the leader of the Kansas City Defender about this particular story also. We'll also talk about today being the first day of early voting here in Georgia. We're broadcasting from Valdosta, Georgia. And of course, all eyes are on this state. Democrats, of course, are 50-50 in the United States Senate with Republicans. And so Republicans desperately want the Senate seat of incumbent Raphael Warnock. And Democrats want to hold on to that as they try to hold on to that majority and also expand their majority by looking at other states, including Nevada, Arizona, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, Florida, and others. And so we'll be talking about all of that right here in Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network. Don't forget to download the Black Star Network app available on all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. Of course, you can also support us with your resources by joining our Bring the Funk Fan Club. Check-in money orders go to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash app, dollar sign, R M Unfiltered. PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered. Venmo is R M Unfiltered. Zelle is Roland@Rolansmartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. And be sure to get a copy of my book, White Fear, How the Brownie of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds, available on all platforms, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, Indie Books, also Books-A-Million, Bookshop Chapters, Target. You can also order from your favorite black bookstore and download it on the Audible app as well. And the folks who are watching on YouTube, Facebook, Twitch, Instagram, also the app, be sure to hit the like and share button as well. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Welcome to Atlanta, one of the most expensive housing markets in America. But rather than help out, Brian Kemp cashed in. He made hundreds of thousands of dollars in real estate. His net worth skyrocketed. And while Atlantans struggled to stay in their homes, Kemp gave $10,000 tax handouts to the richest Georgians and a nearly $700 million no bid contract to his campaign donor. Brian kicked back Kemp, making Georgia work for him, not you.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
You know what's on the ballot. It's not just legislation and policies we believe in, it's democracy, our democracy. There's a choice on the ballot between freedom and fear, between cruelty and compassion, between chaos and community, between voting or violence, and the end of rights generations have fought for. The extremists have a plan, a roadmap for a nation where your voice is silenced and your vote is a memory, where they count their votes and cast ours aside. That's why this year, this fight, this vote is so important. Register, engage, volunteer, fight back against the disinformation that was there, and most of all, vote. Because your vote is all that stands between our future and theirs.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, white nationalists rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
As an angry pro-Trump mob storms the U.S. Capitol with some shots.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance. We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at every university calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women. This is white fear.
Libraries empower the community with education. Liberia Economic Development Initiative, LEDI, is hosting the International Life Changers Awards and Liberia's bicentennial to celebrate LEDI building the country's first modern public library and technology center. Join event host Roland Martin. Our honorees, Reverend Dr. Jamal Bryant, Zernona Clayton, Thomas Dorch Jr., Dana Lupton, Dr. Tammy Brice Deal, on October 29th at the CNN Center Atlanta. There are no public libraries in Liberia, but together we can change that. Get tickets at LEDINow.org.
This is Judge Math.
What's going on, everybody? It's your boy, Mack Wad.
Hey, what's up, y'all? It's your boy, Jacob Lattimore, and you're now watching Roland Martin right now.
All right, folks, welcome back. Roland Martin Unfiltered, broadcasted from Valdosta, Georgia. Let's talk about what's happening in Kansas City. Kansas City Missouri Police dismissed claims that black women were being targeted by a serial killer. Yet on Friday, Timothy Haslett, a 39-year-old white man, was arrested on suspicion of kidnapping and raping a 22-year-old black woman. The woman escaped his home while he dropped his child off at school. Now, she told police she'd been held captive since September. He repeatedly raped and beat her. She, she said that her friends did not make it out, meaning Haslett killed them. Now, last month, a couple of folks, community leaders there sounded the alarm that multiple black women and girls had been missing. The Kansas City Defender reported this as well, reported missing women from Prospect Avenue. Now, the defender discovered Haslett to be a white supremacist, found his Facebook post talking about race wars as well as Breonna Taylor. Ryan Sorrell is the founding editor of the Kansas City Defender. And Ryan, glad to have you back to give us an update. And so the woman said that her friends did not make it out. What, what is, what are police saying in terms of the investigation in his home? Have they discovered remains of others? Are they saying anything at all?
They're keeping the investigation quiet at this point in time. And I also just want to preface the conversation with the fact, I know, last time I was on the show, I was calling for reimagining. I think it's important that we as news outlets truly reimagine how we practice journalism. And I think that a lot of that is actually what contributed to how long this young black woman was kept captive, how long she was tortured, how long she was abused in this man's basement was because we sounded the alarm. I think, as you mentioned, we sounded the alarm on this specific issue. We said a little over a month ago that community leaders were making these reports that black women were going missing, potentially being killed. And the Kansas City Police Department unequivocally, without reaching out to us, without reaching out to any community leaders and asking where these reports were coming from, they unequivocally said that these reports were completely unfounded. They did not take any They did not take any time to investigate. They didn't take any time to look into why people were making these reports. And they said that they were completely unfounded and had zero evidence to back up these claims. And of course, come to find out, a month later, and this young woman actually told the neighbors, because there are some interviews online that include testimonies from the neighbors who actually rescued her. And the neighbors said that she thought that she had been in that basement for two years. That's the type of psychological trauma that she has endured after only a month of being in that truly horrific situation. And so right now, the police department, the investigators aren't releasing any information because it's a very ongoing investigation. There are multiple agencies involved. But I think that the police department itself has taken a very large credibility hit. And the larger conversation here is that black women are not being listened to, that the community is not being listened to, and that people prefer to listen to police departments and white news outlets because we, our news outlet and the community at large, the black community at large, took a lot of flak for reporting these claims that, as we can see, had a lot of credibility to them in hindsight.
We, well, we have, every day in our show, we have a segment called Black and Missing. And so has, you said, folks, there are a number of people who are missing. Have they posted those photos? Have they posted their names and information in terms of actually showing that?
Well, I think that that's the actual difficult part because, for instance, the woman who escaped, she was not actually reported to the missing persons unit in the police department. But the issue is that a lot of these women who are preyed upon don't have people who can advocate for them. Go ahead.
Right. No, I don't mean, I don't mean coming from the police. What I'm saying, any family members, any, anyone else reporting these folks to be, these folks to be missing. Because if I think back, I don't, I think back to the people we actually mention every day, I don't think we actually have one person who was from Kansas City. And so I'm saying, as any, any black media outlets actually solicit information from the public, saying if you have a loved one who's missing, send us their information so we can actually put that information out.
Definitely. Yeah, they're, they're both myself and there's another news outlet in the area here called Kansas City Discover. And they also, they're a black news outlet and they very frequently solicit this information from the public. But I think that the larger issue here is that the women who are being preyed upon don't have people who can advocate for them, who are sending this information to media outlets, are sending, they're not sending the information to the police department to file missing persons unit reports. And so oftentimes in the case, this, this example is a very clear example of the woman who was held in the basement for over a month. No one, you know, reported her as missing and clearly she was missing. And she said that two of her friends were murdered and we're still trying to gather as much information as we can on who those women were or if there are additional people missing, we don't know at this point in time. But we are just trying to gather as much information as we can.
The 22-year-old woman, who is, has she only talked to police investigators? Has she talked to anyone else as relates to what took place with her? Is she being treated somewhere? What is her status?
Well, yeah, right now she is definitely just recovering. That's, that's really the only information that we have. But what we do know is that when she escaped, because she was able to escape whenever Timothy went to, Timothy Haslett went to drop his son off at school and she was able to escape. She had to get past a dog to escape and she was able to run to a neighbor's house. And so there are actually interviews with the neighbors from the Excelsior Citizen. And the Excelsior Citizen is actually who reached out to us to draw the connection in this case. And the Excelsior Citizen has interviews on YouTube right now with the neighbors who actually spoke directly to the woman. And so they're the ones who spoke, who mentioned that she thought that she was down there for two years. They also mentioned that she very adamantly said that two of her friends had been murdered by Timothy Haslett Jr. as well. And they also said some additional information, but I would just recommend people go and listen to it directly from, from what those neighbors had to say.
Gotcha. So she was, she, she relayed that information to neighbors who related to media. My question is regarding that woman, is she being, is she being treated? And is it from family members or the organizations? Who was providing her assistance? Do you know that?
Yeah, no, no one really had, right? We don't even know her name at this point because in the court documents, right now all we have is access to is the prosecutors, the Clay County Prosecutor's probable cause statement. And they gave her an alias of TJ. And so we actually don't know who this woman actually is. We, all we know that she is a black 22-year-old woman. And they said that the Clay County Prosecutor's Office said that she did get out of the hospital and that she is being cared for and that she has been put in contact with a number of agencies. But yeah, we, we don't know very much information because of course, she wants to keep her privacy at this point in time, so.
Are, are you and other black media outlets in Kansas City? Or are y'all establishing a listing or a database of missing African-Americans in that city to be able to help, help folks? And are folks actually responding with information?
Yeah, so we have already started to accumulate our own database. It's something that we, from the very beginning of this case, even when we were being, you know, admonished and even when we were being, you know, called out by all types of news outlets truly across the country, we, we remain steadfast with our community because even when all of that was happening, when our community wasn't being believed, when our news outlet wasn't being believed, we believed that we were taking the right course of action. And so we began working with community members to start to accumulate a database. And so we are working on that and we're also getting in touch with other community organizations, specifically for black women. One of them is called the Real Justice Network, which has been doing this type of work for a very long time in our city. And so we are, you know, in the earlier stages still, but this is something that we think is incredibly needed because the police department is clearly not capable of, you know, adequately handling these issues. This is a much larger issue than just this one specific instance. Them not believing black women and the police department not taking seriously the concerns of people in our community is something that has been the case since our police department was created, you know, 200 years ago. And of course, our police department is also currently under federal investigation for racism and discrimination. And so we, we have no belief and no expectation that the police department in Kansas City will ever properly, you know, produce safety for our communities. And so we're in the earlier stages right now of creating that groundwork and foundation so that we can do it for ourselves.
You've mentioned the database is being created, but where can the public go to actually see? What I'm saying is, are there three, four, five, 10 names? Folks have come forward, the people who are missing, who are African-American and missing? And also have you all also talked to the Black and Missing Foundation? We've actually worked with them, I mean goodness, going back 10-plus years as well, because this is the work they do nationally. So if somebody who's watching or listening, they want to be able to, can they go, go to your site or somewhere else and actually see names, photos, images, things along those lines of folks who are being, who are reported missing?
Right now, our, the database that we have, just because we're in the earlier stages, it's just like a spreadsheet that we have privately. But if people do want to see like images and right now, the only place that that is centralized is by the Missouri State Highway Patrol. They have a missing persons, you know, thing on database online that has how old the person is, the race, the race of the person, the person's gender, when they went missing. So if people do want to report it or look up missing persons in Missouri, that's available at the Missouri State Highway Patrol and also for the Black and Missing Foundation. Go ahead.
And of the, of the database you're talking about, how many of them are from Kansas City?
The one in the Missouri State Highway Patrol, I, I would have to double check. I haven't seen in Kansas City specifically how many people are missing.
Okay. And you, by the way, big opponent about the Black and Missing Foundation, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying that they just, because of this whole situation, they have reached out to us and we are definitely, that's, that's definitely a relationship that we are hoping to continue because it's just been made so clear from this situation that we cannot depend on the police by any means at all to create safety for the people in our community, to take our concerns seriously. And we know for a fact now because of this situation, which is just one of many, and, you know, we're going to, you know, I think that this, this specific situation is uplifting the conversation in a way that it should have been a long time ago around black missing women, around black women who are being killed and no one is speaking up about it. I think that this is a conversation we should have had a very long time ago. And it's just very, very sad, truly, that it took this horrific tragedy of this woman being abused, sexually assaulted, trapped and tortured in a basement for, and the police calling us liars and the police calling the community liars for, you know, reporting these things. And, you know, really the reason that they, they said that, that they called us liars and that they said that we were spreading misinformation was because there wasn't a missing persons report. And so I actually reached out to the police department and I said, do you still stand by your statements of saying what we reported on was completely unfounded? And I said, I can understand if you said, we don't have any evidence to support these claims because if you don't have any evidence, then that's just what it is. But clearly now, what we reported on was not completely unfounded. And all they had to do to handle the situation better would be to say, you know, something like, we don't have any evidence, but we're willing to look into it. Or we don't have any evidence, but you know, where did you all get these reports from? Anything, truly anything that they could have said other than they're completely unfounded. And so that to us is what's most problematic and harmful about the situation. And that's why we are going to be making sure this is a long-term effort to ensure that we can secure and, and create safety for ourselves and our communities.
Ryan Sorel, founder and editor of Kansas City Defender. We appreciate it. Thanks a lot. And then keep us updated on what happens next.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks a bunch. Renee, I want to start with you. And the, the point there about being able to establish own database, I mean, at the end of the day, that's one of the reasons why we do the Blacks and Missing every day because frankly, when you look at mainstream media, if you're a missing white woman, oh, it'll get reported like crazy. But if you're black and missing, it takes protests, yelling and screaming, and typically that's six, eight weeks later after the fact. We know the most important time is the first 72 hours.
Right. I wish I would have had a chance to ask Ryan a question because he's right about what he's saying. I just wonder, you know, how did they get the information that folks are missing? Because if the, the police department is saying that they had no formal missing persons report, okay, well, I assume that the Kansas City Defender has some journalistic standards where they don't just print what they hear from one person. They had to have multiple sources confirming that people, that black women were missing in order for them to report that. So if they had enough information, credible information that they felt they could report on this, why did the, the police not take that and say, okay, we don't have a missing persons report, which is not unusual because we know a lot of times predators will select people who they believe do not have family or friends who can come look for them. So what this looks like is sometimes predators, you know, kidnapping sex workers, predators kidnapping people who are having drug addiction issues. So that is not something that should have stopped the police from looking into this. So I just wonder what, where did, how did the Kansas City Defender find out that people were missing? And of course, you know, the police need to answer and they need to have a better answer than, well, there was no formal missing persons report. They need to answer why they didn't put any effort or any energy into following up on this information.
That was a, that was actually a pastor, community activist who actually did a video, online video, and they actually reported that particular video. That's what happened there. Omicongo, Ryan is correct. The Kansas City, Missouri Police Department is under investigation by the Department of Justice. And look, you know, here's a question. If you're the state, you might want to send in state officials to investigate what's happening here. So they initially just blew, blew them off, said there were, there were no serial killers.
Not only did they blow them off, they did it in such an ignorant fashion. I'm reading right here from one of their comments that they wrote. They said, "We do still maintain that there's no indication that what you guys reported was accurate and there was no indication there was anything that supported that claim." So, you know, Ryan, Ryan is talking about not hearing from them, but then when you do hear from them, you get that, that callousness. And it speaks to the tension that so many of us feel across the country in our communities. And going off of Representative Renita's point, we see this all across the country, Roland. This is kind of what we were talking about last week with the Jeffrey Dahmer documentary and how that underplayed the role race played in, in, in what he was doing. We talked about it with the man in California who was targeting young, young, young black teenagers as well. And so this is an ongoing problem. And so really, at the end of the day, we have to stay vigilant. We, we know that there's going to be more pushback as this story becomes more public about, oh, these stories being made up and falsified. And so I think the questions that you were asking were really poignant as, as it relates to making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed because these are members of our community who have been marginalized and thrown away. And you would think with the types of cases that this department is dealing with, they absolutely should be bringing in the state because what they have right now is a serious credibility problem. And you would think that as a story like this becomes nation, nation known nationally, you'd want to do everything possible, especially when dealing with other lawsuits, to have some type of credibility in some way, shape, or form because right now, they have none.
Julian.
I shudder when I think about what happened to this young woman, the reporting about her being detained, whipped, probably overhearing the, the killings of her friends and her colleagues. But beyond that, I shudder at the kind of anti-blackness that allows the police officers or the police department to simply dismiss credible possibilities. They didn't have any proof, but they have possibilities. They have buzz in the community about things happening, people disappearing, and they chose not to look into it. It is anti-blackness at its very worst. And it is why, as Omicongo says, black people do not trust police officers. But even beyond that, Roland, there's a, there's a kernel of joy in this, if you will. This young brother that you interviewed who brought, broke the story, he started a digital startup. The Kansas City Defender is this digital form of media. You are the pioneer in looking at digital media and the way that people break stories that the mainstream media does not break. So I want to know that what the mainstream papers in Kansas City have done about this and what are they doing about it now? Because now we know that this man has basically tortured at least one person, according to the young lady, perhaps three others, her friends who didn't make it. So where's the investigation of this rancid, corrupt, ignorant police department? Where is the investigation of them? That ought to be the next step and it ought not just be Missouri story, it ought to be a FBI investigation. How do you simply ignore the torture of black women? How do you simply ignore that?
Indeed. So that's a question we'll keep asking. All right, folks, got to go to a break. We come back, we'll chat with folks here in Valdosta, Georgia. Today's the first day of early voting in Georgia. More than 100,000 folks voted today, breaking the state's record. We'll talk about that. Also, in 60 seconds, the debate between Governor Brian Kemp and Stacey Abrams takes place from the Atlanta Press Club as well. Last night, Senator Raphael Warnock showed up at the debate. Guess who didn't? The man with the badge, Herschel Walker. We will talk about the debate they had Friday and also get some thoughts of folks here about what is important to them when it comes to this election in the state of Georgia. Of course, critical midterms happening all across the country. Going to a break, folks. We come back, more Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Start Network right here in Valdosta, Georgia. Back in a moment.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Welcome to Atlanta, one of the most expensive housing markets in America. But rather than help out, Brian Kemp cashed in. He made hundreds of thousands of dollars in real estate. His net worth skyrocketed. And while Atlantans struggled to stay in their homes, Kemp gave $10,000 tax handouts to the richest Georgians and a nearly $700 million no bid contract to his campaign donor. Brian kicked back Kemp, making Georgia work for him, not you.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
We are in sunny South Dallas. The election is coming up. It's super important that folks know who they are voting for, but more importantly, what they are voting for. Y'all, we got some free shirts and free lunch right over here.
Freedom is our birthright. No matter what we're up on.
Freedom is our birthright. No matter what we're up against, we're sending a message in Dallas, in Texas, and in the country. We won't black down. That's what this bus tour is all about.
The housing cost is one of the most capitalized areas that we have found. People who are marginalized, that are brown and black, we are suffering the most. And I think that we have the biggest vote and the biggest impact in this election.
I'm voting for affordable housing, for sure.
We should not be paying the cost of a utility failure because our elected officials are too proud to say, we need help.
I know that we can bring out our people to vote. It's a part of our birthright. It's a part of our heritage. And surely, it's a part of our prison, a part of our future.
That's right. That's what's up. And we won't black down.
Forward that message to five friends, because in that message, it's got links to how to get registered, how to check your registration status.
Like I said, 2:30, we'll start rendezvous right here on the street.
I am voting to let our voice be heard in the rural communities, that, hey, we are people too. There are things that we need.
Free shirts, free food, and lots of power.
We are in Longview, Texas, where black voters matter, 365.
Whatever type of oppression a white supremacist throws our way, we will not black down. We are in relentless pursuit of liberation of our people.
Freedom is liberation for black bodies and black communities to make economic change through political power.
Freedom is choice.
We won't black down.
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 On the next Get Wealthy with me, Deborah Owens, America's Wealth Coach, it's one thing to have a seat at a table, and it's another to be an investor on the cap table of a unicorn. We're talking venture capital with Leisha Bell, and how generational wealth is built through early-stage investing.
I know very few people who do what I do, and that's very unfortunate. And I think Silicon Valley has been unkind to black people.
That's right here on Get Wealthy, only on Black Star Network.
Pull up a chair. Take your seat at the Black Table with me, Dr. Greg Carr, here on the Black Star Network. Every week, we'll take a deeper dive into the world we're living in. Join the conversation, only on the Black Star Network.
When you talk about blackness and what happens in black culture, we're about covering these things that matter to us, speaking to our issues and concerns.
This is a genuine people-powered movement.
A lot of stuff that we're not getting, you get it. And you spread the word. We wish to plead our own cause. Too long have others spoken for us. We cannot tell our own story if we can't pay for it. This is about covering us. Invest in black-owned media. Your dollars matter. We don't have to keep asking them to cover ours. So please, support us in what we do, folks. We want to hit 2,000 people, $50 this month. Raise $100,000. We're behind 100,000. So we want to hit that. Y'all money makes this possible. Check some money orders. Go to Peel Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. The Cash App is Dollar Sign RM Unfiltered. PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered. Venmo is RM Unfiltered. Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com.
I've always said this, rather than to continue to fight for a fair piece of the pie, and the equal slice of the pie, I want my hand on the knife that cuts the pie. And to that extent, who bakes the pie? And who puts it in? And that's one of the things that got me involved in going into politics in the first instance. I'm tired of people making decisions for me.
Right.
And mine. I want to be a part of that decision-making process. And luckily, it has paid off in terms of seeing the progress that many people in America have made, particularly people of color. One thing bothers me now that we seem to be losing that.
Right.
By saying that we've got to be more concerned with other people than those people who are here. We built America.
Hey, I'm Antoneek Smith.
Hello, everyone. It's Kiara Sheard.
Hey, I'm Taj.
I'm Coco.
And I'm Lili.
And we're SWV.
What's up, y'all? It's Ryan Destiny, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
So the things that we're tweeting out there is when our great men and women in law enforcement are making drug busts, not from recreational use.
It's a plant.
Other things. But, but that's what my focus is on.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Greg, please ask a question of Stacey Abrams.
Yeah, Ms. Abrams, in 2018, you didn't concede defeat to Governor Kemp. And you talked of systemic problems with the state's election system. This election, do you commit to accept the outcome of the vote regardless of what it shows? And do you stand by your use of words like rigged four years ago to describe the state's election system?
In 2018, I began my speech on November 16th acknowledging that Governor Kemp had won the election. I then proceeded to lay out in grave detail the challenges faced by voters under his leadership as Secretary of State, including the 10-plus-two who were arrested in Quitman, Georgia, because they had the temerity to use absentee ballots. I told the story of students who were denied access to the right to vote, even though they had duly registered. 80,000 complaints had come in by that day, and it took four years of federal investigation in a lawsuit that was the longest-running voting rights lawsuit in the state's in recent history that proved us right. Now, we didn't win every single claim, but we forced massive changes to the election laws. And unfortunately, Brian Kemp and Brad Raffensperger have decided to restore their greatest hits. Just today, a homeless woman was denied the right to vote in Forsyth County because she could not, she did not receive a provisional ballot because she had been challenged. As governor, I intend to stand up for the right to vote. I will always acknowledge the outcome of elections, but I will never deny access to every voter, because that is the responsibility of every American to defend the right to vote.
Thank you. Brian Kemp rebuttal, 30 seconds.
Well, I would just say, Ms. Abrams is going to do a lot of attacking of my record tonight, because she doesn't want to talk about her own record. In 2018, in the governor's race, we had the largest African-American turnout in the country. She said that Senate Bill 202, our recent Elections Integrity Act, what we passed two years ago, would be suppressive in Jim Crow 2.0. Just this past May, in our primaries, we again had record turnout in the Republican primary and the Democratic primary. In Georgia, it's easy to vote and hard to cheat.
And I'd like to add just a second here, as the libertarian.
30 seconds for you.
Although you will push for people to have access to going to the polls and voting, you're not pushing ballot access. This is a huge, huge oppression for people like the third parties, the people that want to get their people on the ballot. We have, I think, 20% Democrats, 20% Republicans in the state of Georgia. That leaves 60% of people in Georgia unrepresented by ballot access laws that both of them support.
30 seconds, Ms. Abrams.
Actually, to correct Mr. Hazel, I co-sponsored legislation to expand ballot access, because I agree with you, that third parties should have better access to the right to vote in the state of Georgia.
Never.
I co-sponsored it with, with one of our independents in the state legislature. But let's be clear about ballot access and voter access. Brian Kemp was the Secretary of State, and he has assiduously denied access to the right to vote. We know that the right to vote is the only way that we can make the changes we need in the state, the only way we can make the changes we need in this country, whether it's access to the right to an abortion, the ability to take care of our families. We need a governor who believes in access to the right to vote.
All right.
And not in voter suppression, which is the hallmark of Brian Kemp's leadership.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on.
With all due respect, I was called out. I would like to, just the record reflect, as my time as Secretary of State, I'm the person that created the online voter registration system in this state, where any Georgian can vote, register to vote 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So for someone to say that we have been suppressive in our state when we've seen turnout increase over the years, including with minorities like African-Americans, Latinos, and others, is simply not true. And again, Ms. Abrams is going to lie about my record, because she doesn't want to talk about her own.
All right. We're going to move on here.
It's all right. And that's the case.
We're going to move on here, Mr. Hazel. Jennifer, your question for Brian Kemp.
Governor Kemp, several hospitals and medical centers across the state have announced or gone through with plans to close their doors, leaving a gap in care and a reduction in services, at a time when our healthcare workers are already suffering from burnout, from increased demand and workloads. Many are now facing care that will be delayed or unavailable, while our state's capital will soon have only one Level One trauma center. What will you do to ensure Georgians have access to critical healthcare services and hospitals?
Well, I would just remind voters at home, there's also hospitals being built across this state and new options for people for healthcare. Look, the AMC situation was something that was thrown on a lot of political leaders, including me. But instead of complaining about it and doing the blame game, I went and worked with Fulton County, with the Cab County, with Democrats to come up with a solution that puts state resources into Grady to help make sure people have the access and the care that they need in our state. And I'm committed to continuing to do that in the future.
All right. Shane, I'm sorry. Chuck, you get the final question to Shane Hazel.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, you ran for Congress in 2018. That was just four years ago you ran as a Republican. You got less than 30% of the vote in the Republican primary. What happened between then and now that made you a libertarian?
Oh, I actually came back to my roots as a libertarian. We believe in freedom. We saw what the Republican Party was. We saw what the Democratic Party was. They are forcing coercion. No matter what they talk about, it's forcing coercion, whether it's a particular need for hospitals, whether it is taking guns away from law-abiding citizens. It is always forcing coercion at the point of a gun from the Democrats and Republicans. To look at life through consent, the eyes that, hey, we can all have transactions. We do it every day in the private sector. 99.9% of us go throughout our day without raping people, without murdering people, without pointing guns at people to take their property. That is not what the government does under Republicans and Democrats, period. That's how I became a libertarian. This is why we're going to send this thing into a runoff. And if people were really looking for something to change, you'd vote libertarian. You'd send a message to both of these parties, because one of these people will most likely be the executive in a rigged system that you want to be more free.
Thank you. That concludes the first round of the debate. The candidates will now ask a question to each of their opponents. Candidates will have 30 seconds to ask the question, 60 seconds to respond, and the candidate who asks the questions will have 30 seconds for rebuttal. By random selection, Brian Kemp, you may ask the first question to Stacey Abrams.
Well, thank you very much. As many people know, I have over 100 sheriffs endorsing my campaign, several which are Democrats. And my question for Ms. Abrams tonight is how many Democrat, or how many sheriffs statewide have publicly endorsed your campaign?
Mr. Kemp, what you are attempting to do is continue the lie that you've told so many times. I think you believe it's the truth. I support law enforcement and did so for 11 years. Worked closely with the Sheriff's Association. I'm probably the only person standing here who's ever actually written a SOP for a police department when I was working for the city of Atlanta. But I have two brothers, one who has committed crimes, and I want his victims to be able to call the police and get the help they need. And I've always supported that, right. But I have another brother who has faced being pulled over for driving while black when he was coming back from his job as a social worker. Unlike you, I don't have the luxury of relying on slogans to describe my position on public safety. I believe that we need safety and justice, because I love both of my brothers. And like most Georgians, I lead a complicated life where we need access to help, but we also need to know that we are safe from racial violence. While you may not have had that experience, too many people I know have. And that is why I will always stand up for making certain that safety and justice are the conversations we're having in Georgia and the delivery we have as the next governor of Georgia.
Thank you. 30 seconds, Mr. Kemp.
Well, I would just tell people that, look, I support safety and justice. But Ms. Abrams refused to answer the question, so I'll let you know that the answer is zero. No sheriffs are endorsing her statewide because of her stances on wanting to defund the police, eliminate cash bail, and serving on the boards of organizations like the Margaret Casey Foundation that supports and gives grants to organizations that are promoting the defund the police movement.
If he, if I may respond, because he actually lied there.
Yes, 30 seconds.
I do have the support of sheriffs. But unlike Mr. Kemp, I do not make it my plan to list every person who supports me. I have the support of sheriffs. I have the support of advocates. I have the support of victims. I have the support of those who want to be treated fairly in our system. I have to have conversations with the entirety of Georgia. I don't have the luxury of being a part of a good old boys' club where we don't focus on the needs of our people. And that is why my mission has been to put out very concrete plans explaining how I will serve justice, how I will serve safety, and how I will serve the citizens of the state of Georgia.
30 seconds, Brian Kemp.
Well, look, I would just tell people, I know Ms. Abrams is upset and mad, because these are things that she said. This is not me making this up. This is things that she said in interviews that she's done, and she's sitting on organizations that you can go look at the facts yourself. And that's why the men and women in law enforcement want a governor that is going to stand with them, who has been with them, not only to have their back, but also stand shoulder to shoulder on things like civil unrest and going after street gangs and human traffickers.
Thank you very much. Stacey Abrams, you get the next question for Shane Hazel.
Mr. Hazel, Republicans and Democrats have raised the alarm over the rise in the Chinese Communist Party-backed companies purchasing American farmland. To date, they've purchased more than 1 million acres of farmland in the state of Georgia. Would you agree with Mike Pompeo that allowing those purchases in the state of Georgia is a sign of madness? And would you be concerned about the national security implications of the Chinese Communist Party purchasing this land with the support of the state of Georgia?
I see the setup for this question. I understand why it was projected at me. As libertarians, we believe that you own your property and that the state can't take it away from you and can't sell it, or can't determine who you sell it to. The CCP, obviously, which is going through some, its own internal unrest right now, I believe is probably purchasing this with things like central bank digital dollars and yuan, which are also coming down to a critical nature where people are in uprising in China. What we need to look at is how these purchases are being made. Are we accepting fiat CCP yuan in Georgia as a actual currency? It's about as good as the US currency, the fiat currency that we're about to have hoisted on us in terms of a CBDC. I'm not going to tell you or anybody else as governor how or who to sell your property to. And I imagine that in the end, the free market will work itself out.
Thank you. Stacey Abrams, 30 seconds.
The state of Georgia is watching our farmland be purchased by the Chinese Communist Party. And while that is not normally a conversation that we have, it is something that we should be concerned about. Agriculture is our number-one industry, and Georgia has 13 military installations. The fact that the state of Georgia is working with the Chinese Communist Party, using one of their technologies that both Donald Trump and Joe Biden have warned is very much a national security threat, should be of great concern to every Georgian. This is not about being concerned simply about who's owning the land, but it's about how much access to our information they have because of the state.
Thank you. Shane Hazel, you may ask your question of Stacey Abrams.
Yeah, I'd agree with you. The military-industrial complex is a big problem. It is. And the fact that we have people trying to come here to, I don't know, get a, get a backdoor into our military, I think one of the things we should be talking about as Georgians and as executives is the Defend the Guard Act, where our military has been used very, I don't know, haphazardly around the world to go and take resources from the Middle East, or now in Ukraine.
Mr. Hazel, your question.
Yeah, this is, my question to who?
To Stacey Abrams.
Oh, we've already switched gears.
Yes.
My, my question to you, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I have hearing problems, guys. My question to you is, I mentioned CBDCs. As the executive of Georgia, when we come into a CBDC from the Federal Reserve, will you, as the executive, accept the CCP-type-style currency?
I believe that the conversation about currency is a complicated one. And part of the challenge we have is how these, how this currency is transmitted, the very real security threats with digital currency. The hacking and mining of that digital currency should concern all Georgians. As the governor of Georgia, I will work very closely with the Federal Reserve, but also with the innovators and the entrepreneurs who do see an opportunity. But before we take a step forward that could put us at risk, our responsibility is to understand the complexity of what is happening with these transactions. And as exciting as it is, we also know it's deeply problematic when we do not have the adequate safeguards in place. That's one of the reasons I've raised concerns about WeChat and about the purchase of farmland. But what we know overall is that we need a governor who's conversant in these issues, who understands that, for example, in the state of Georgia, we have access to $3.5 billion in American currency that could be delivered tomorrow to save our hospitals and to save our lives. But our current governor has refused to accept those dollars. My intention is to do what's best for the state of Georgia every single day.
Shane Hazel, you get a 30-second rebuttal.
Working with the Federal Reserve, who's got us into the mess that we are in right now, because of a centralized fiat currency, it will be absolutely worthless. They will be dangling carrots in front of the governor, in front of the executives, in front of the legislature, to do exactly what their mandates are. If they are mandating that they take the property of people, then they will If they are mandating that they take the property of people, then they will do it. If they want to invade your homes, your privacy, your businesses, they will do it because of CBDCs.
All right. Stacey Abrams, please ask your question to Brian Kemp.
Absolutely. Mr. Kemp, under your leadership, there is currently a 100-year gap between minority-owned businesses and majority-owned businesses. Although minorities comprise 48% of the population, they only generate 12.2% of the business revenue in the state. And under every analysis that we have seen, it will take 100 years to close that gap, given the current process that you have in place. You served four years in the Senate, eight years as Secretary of State in charge of businesses. You served four years as governor. What are your concrete, specific, targeted plans to decrease and address the racial equity gap currently facing contracting and purchasing for minority-owned businesses?
Governor Kemp?
Well, I would remind Georgians.
All right, folks, welcome back. That's the debate happening as we speak, live debate between Brian Kemp and Stacey Abrams for governor of Georgia. We're here in Valdosta, Georgia. Today was the first day of early voting. All eyes are on this state, critical, critical races, state races, but also when it comes to national implications, when it comes to the U.S. Senate race between incumbent Senator Raphael Warnock and Herschel Walker. They debated Friday night. I don't necessarily know if I would call that a debate. And so there was supposed to be a second debate last night. Herschel Walker chose not to show up to the Atlanta Press Club. And so here was Senator Raphael Warnock last night talking to the empty podium where Herschel Walker was. I guess an empty suit has an empty podium.
I think Herschel Walker, if he were here, should tell the people of Georgia why he thinks they should pay for expensive insulin and pharmaceutical companies should be able to charge us whatever they like.
My opponent, on the other hand, has a well-documented history of violence. And he hasn't come clean about it. He's blaming me for his own history, saying, I don't believe in redemption. I believe in redemption. I preach about it. But it's hard to be redeemed if you're not willing to come clean about the basic facts of your life. And at the end of the day, again, this, this race is not about who's been redeemed. It's about who's ready. And I think Mr. Walker has shown time and time again that he's not ready to represent the people of Georgia. And I'm not going to be distracted about what Herschel Walker says about me. He doesn't tell the truth about himself. He said that he graduated from college. He didn't. He said he was valedictorian of his class. He wasn't. He said he started a business that doesn't even exist. And the other night, when I said you, he pretended to be a police officer. He presented a badge as if that were proof that he really is a police officer. And now he wants us to think that he's a senator. This race is not about who's been redeemed. This race is about who's ready to represent the people of Georgia in the United States Senate. And by not showing up tonight for the job interview, by giving nonsensical answers, by this history of violence, Herschel Walker shows he's not ready.
Senator Warnock mentioned that strange badge thing in the debate on Friday night. If you missed it, here you go.
He talks about the police. Now, I have more sheriff that has endorsed me than anyone running in Georgia right now. And I even have some sheriffs here, and they've endorsed me because they know I have their back. They're going to have my back. So to listen to him say that after calling a name, I think is a disgrace.
Mr. Walker, thank you. I have a follow-up now for both of you.
I think I ought to be able to respond to that.
I will give you the opportunity. 15 seconds to respond, Senator Warnock.
We will see time and time again tonight, as we've already seen, that my opponent has a problem with the truth. And just because he said something doesn't mean it's true. I have supported our police officers. I've called them, and I've prayed with their families, like those officers lost in Cobb County when they were killed, doing what police officers routinely do. You can support police officers, as I've done, through the COPS program, through the Invest to Protect program, while at the same time holding police officers, like all professions, accountable. One thing I have not done, I've never pretended to be a police officer. And, and, and I've never, I've never threatened a shootout with the police.
And now I have to respond to that.
We are, we are moving on, gentlemen.
I have to respond to that. And you know what's so funny? I am with many police officers. And at the same time.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Walker, excuse me, Mr. Walker. Please, out of respect, I need to let you know, Mr. Walker, you are very well aware of the rules tonight.
Yes.
And you have a prop. That is not allowed, sir. I ask you to put that prop away.
Well, it's not a prop. This is real. And he said I have a problem. I never went to law enforcement.
Mr. Walker, excuse me, sir.
Yes.
You're very well aware of the rules, aren't you?
Well, he brought up the truth, and let's talk about the truth.
Thank you.
All right now, all right, folks, here in Valdosta, we're joined by State Representative Dexter Sharper, Councilwoman Sandra Thule, as well as Reverend Bernard Francis. Glad to see all three of you here. Let's start here. First of all, anyone of y'all got a badge? Anybody got a badge? Anybody got an extra badge? I mean, I'm still sort of surprised to sit here and see. And then I saw another interview, he talked about he got badges from all around the state. That does not make you a cop. Am I right? I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out. Maybe Georgia different, but not here. Okay, I'm just checking, just checking. All right. So I'm just, yeah, come on, pass the microphone, come on. I'm just confused by that, just confused by that. I do, I do want to talk about this. Any one of y'all can start this way. Obviously, in the debate, Abrams and Kemp, and also in the debate with Warnock and Walker, Republicans are making this all about defund the police, defund the police. ABC News did an analysis, and they did it earlier, where they showed of the top 100 police departments, 83% of those police departments, their budget's increased. So where the hell is a defund the police if this is supposed to be so widespread when we're seeing police departments get money? Democrats are passing these budgets. And so that seems to be the latest dog whistle that I, for me, that I think is a lot appealing to white voters.
Well, I'll speak on that a little bit. With the city council, we did increase our budget so that we can hire more police officers. We've also got more vehicles forming and everything like that. We're trying to send them to training and so forth like that. So we are nowhere near thinking about defunding.
But, but, but the point here is, even when you talk about the concept of defund the police, what it is, is that you show me the example of keep giving police departments money, and then that solves the problem. What folks are saying is, how do we deal with, if you want to talk about crime, you want to talk about things along those lines, you have to also talk about education. You have to talk about jobs. You have to talk about economics. And so combating crime is not solely a function. Police respond to crimes. The whole point is not to have crime in the first place. And so, and so that, to me, I think, has to be a conversation that folks are having on the city level and the state level in terms of what to be doing to ensure that we're seeing upper mobility in communities so you don't have crime.
Well, I'll answer that. What we have to look at is, you're right. It's not so much the police department, it's about the root of the problem. And what I see as the root is financial literacy. Back in the day, in school, we had financial literacy. In our schools, we had, you know, your family, complete family, moms, dads, things like that. But they took the personal finance out of schools for a while. But in Georgia, we just passed a bill to put it back into the schools where they can teach financial literacy. Because I don't care if you're a doctor, lawyer, whatever you're doing in your life, if you don't understand money, you're going to have a problem. And we see a lot of younger people, I'm working with groups now, where we're doing more youth entrepreneurship programs. We can always tell people, back in the day, we'd say, say no to drugs, but say yes to what? And now today, the big gang violence and with our youth, that's a huge problem, especially in Georgia and across the country. We'll tell them to stop, get out of the gangs, but they're breaking in homes, they're breaking in vehicles, getting these guns. They're doing everything you can think of. But I think if we can get that financial literacy coupled with youth entrepreneurship and give these people something, the young people especially, something to say yes to, to let them know, hey, I can start me a little business and grow it legitimately. So that's where my heart has been my entire life on financial literacy and education.
Reverend, I absolutely get, I absolutely get financial literacy. But you can target a young person for entrepreneurship, but if a mom or a dad, if you ain't got enough money for food, if you got an affordable housing crisis, you're still going, you're still going to have, have an issue there. Do you see, do you see candidates speaking to those issues? And are people also talking about that? Because again, I absolutely understand the issue of the impact of crime in our society. But it, but it seems, it's amazing how we have a significant conversation about increased funding to police, but we're decreasing funding for mental health services. We're decreasing funding when it comes to providing economic opportunities. And then when I hear people say tax cuts, well, tax cuts don't help you if you already broke.
I agree with you, Mr. Martin. I'm Bruce Francis, Reverend Bruce Francis, and I'm also, as well as a pastor, I'm an educator in the city, and I agree with you in most, in what you have said. But I think we also need to look at while we're giving increases to the police department, we also need to consider giving more increase to the educational system. We've taken money from there and put it in other places. And so we're not getting the teachers that we need. Our students are not getting the education that they need. And the pandemic has set us back. And so now we're playing a catch-up game. And so we need to make sure that we're doing things to improve that and make sure that things are happening in that regard as well.
Well, you've seen, the last couple of years, you've seen Senator Warnock, obviously, in the United States Senate. In terms of how would you judge his work since he joined the United States Senate? Councilwoman, go ahead.
I believe that some of the issues with Reverend Warnock, that he's presented to the citizens and everything, that it has increased their interest to want to do something. They want to get, they want to get involved, and they are by showing it, by getting up and getting out and voting more. Some of the things that he's talking about, it relates directly to them, and they can identify with it. So I do believe with the issues he's talking about and so forth, that I believe it's just sparked an interest in our citizens. And I also wanted to say, too, with our citizens getting out, with our police department, we need them to have like a communication, a type of connection with the community so that that would spark an interest and that would help, I think, alleviate some of these crimes that we have going on. If they get to know the people, the people are not, they'd be more responsive. We, a lot of people do not trust the police department because they don't know them. Police department do not know a lot of citizens. But they could connect some kind of way like that. I think that would alleviate a lot of the crimes, a lot of the shootings that we have here.
Representative Sharper, I've seen a lot of conversation from Republicans in the government talking about the state surplus. Y'all got a whole bunch of federal money. In fact, how much of Georgia's annual budget comes from the federal government?
If you look at it percentage-wise, it would be more or less almost around half if you look at all the programs that they put in. But they, we got even more money because of everything that was going on, pandemic, things like that. But we have too much surplus, if you ask me.
Hold on, hold on, what does that mean? I ain't, I ain't never heard of having too much money.
Oh, too much money sitting by not being used.
There you go. No, so it's not that you have too much surplus, you got too much unused surplus.
And one, one area that people don't think about, and it comes a lot from the African-American community, is how much money we put in that Georgia lottery. There's a lot of money coming in through the Georgia lottery. We put a lot out for education. However, there is a certain part of that money that comes in, that's surplus, that we can pretty much do, the governor can do anything he wants to with that money. And that money is not being used to help out your medical costs and things like that. One big thing, and I wanted to mention quickly about Warnock, you say some things he's done since he's been in. But being able to work across the aisle to get things, especially for our state and others, a lot of the broadband money, a lot of money, Warnock has brought in a lot of money, him and Ossoff, into our state. And he gets around, he meets the people. That's the biggest connection that we've seen a lot out of Warnock. He's making it personable. He's making everybody, making sure you're inclusive. People, they just don't want to vote just because you say, vote for me. No, they want to be a part of the process. And I say the biggest thing he's done, he's been more inclusive of all the people, their ideas, their encouragement. And he's been very responsive to the people. I just wanted to mention that part. But at the same time, we need to see a way that we can get more of our money to go into Medicaid, into the Medicaid expansion. And that's one thing we need to do in the state of Georgia. I worked with Stacey Abrams for five or six years, pushing for Medicaid expansion. And the biggest thing is, when you are in the majority, the Republican part of Georgia, they're not the ones that are without the insurance. They don't know what it's like to sit in the ER for 12 hours. They don't know what it's like for their family members not to have health care.
No, no, you mean the lawmakers.
The lawmakers, exactly.
But many of those Republican lawmakers broke constituents' due.
Exactly. But they, they don't care about that because a lot of times, if you don't really experience something, you really can't understand it. So that's what we're seeing. And first of all, the governor deal way back, he had the opportunity to expand Medicaid, which will increase a lot of jobs. It's federal money coming in to get health care for the uninsured. We have over now 550,000 people that are eligible for Medicaid expansion. But they still won't expand it. And I'm going to close right here on this. By them not understanding and knowing it, it puts our people in a worse situation. And they don't realize that when the hospitals have to continue to close when they shouldn't or the, the insurance premiums get higher, it's affecting them too. They don't really know that because, you know, the injured care, all the insurance premiums is done by different zones and things like that. It's still affecting them. But because it was Obama back in the day saying, let's do it, it was a big deal for a lot of Republicans in Georgia.
Well, 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 remember, a lot of them said they hated Obamacare, but they loved the Affordable Care Act.
Same thing.
Which was, which to me still is the absolute dumbest thing I've ever seen in my life.
Exactly.
Not realizing it's literally the same damn thing. I mean, I don't, it's crazy, absolutely crazy. Hold tight one second, I'm going to go to a break. We come back, we're going to continue our conversation, talk about what's happening here in Georgia, what is on the minds of voters here, inflation, the economy, all of those issues are important as well. So we'll talk more about that. We come back, Roland Martin, Unfiltered, broadcasting live here in Valdosta, Georgia, the Black Star Network, back in a moment. Y'all clap if y'all want to.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Hood Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie. We'll laugh together, cry together, pull ourselves together, and cheer each other on. So join me for new shows each Tuesday on Black Star Network, A Balanced Life with Dr. Jackie.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
You know what's on the ballot. It's not just legislation and policies we believe in, it's democracy, our democracy. There's a choice on the ballot between freedom and fear, between cruelty and compassion, between chaos and community, between voting or violence, and the end of rights generations have fought for. The extremists have a plan, a roadmap for a nation where your voice is silenced and your vote is a memory, where they count their votes and cast hours aside. That's why this year, this fight, this vote is so important. Register, engage, volunteer, fight back against the disinformation that is there. And most of all, vote, because your vote is all that stands between our future and theirs.
Welcome to Atlanta, one of the most expensive housing markets in America. But rather than help out, Brian Kemp cashed in. He made hundreds of thousands of dollars in real estate. His net worth skyrocketed. And while Atlantans struggled to stay in their homes, Kemp gave $10,000 tax handouts to the richest Georgians and a nearly $700 million no-bid contract to his campaign donor. Brian kicked back Kemp, making Georgia work for him, not you.
Hey, what's up, everybody? It's Goffrey, the funniest dude on the planet.
Hi, I'm Israel Houghton. Apparently, the other message I did was not fun enough.
Apparently, the other message I did was not fun enough. So this is fun. You are watching.
Roland Martin, my man, Unfiltered.
This gonna stop. All right, y'all, welcome back. I'm here in Valdosta, Georgia. Today's the first day of early voting in the elections taking place in this state. I saw a tweet earlier stating that 100,000 folks voted today, breaking the record of 72,000. So I want to talk about that. So it's amazing when I listen to Kemp or Walker or others talk about how Georgia's had record turnout. In fact, Supreme Court Justice John Roberts, that was his rationale when they gutted section for the Voting Rights Act. But this notion that, oh, well, because people are still registering or turning out and jumping hurdles, everything is fine, when the problem is that you have to jump hurdles, the ending of ballot drop boxes, they're trying to cut back on mail-in voting. And so I just think it's disingenuous to listen to folks talk about, oh, how great things have gone because we've had record turnout, even though people have been having to, you know, again, hop over hurdles, purposely being put in the way to keep them from voting, largely African-Americans.
One thing I want to say about that is too, is because of the education to the people, we have informed them to go and vote early because of potential problems that may happen. Like they said, jumping over hurdles, they were getting ready to be prepared to jump over the hurdles. So a lot of them have started going out, and they call it a record number. No, this is the fact, the people are educated. They want to get out and vote, they want their vote to count. So they're going early in case a problem comes up, and they will have time to go and fix those problems.
And look, Reverend, folk just straight lying. I mean, and for me, I watch these shows and I see these people, they say, oh, well, you know, they're stretching the truth. No, I grew up, if I lied, my daddy liked, "You lied." I mean, we not see that dancing around it. And so all of these folks are lying about voter fraud. They're straight lying.
And it seems to be endemic amongst other culture to tell these lies, these mistruths to try to discourage our people from voting. But I'm proud of the fact that we have been pushing the vote in here in Georgia, here in Valdosta, in Lowndes County. Our Democratic Party has been working very hard to get our people out to vote. The candidates have been coming into Valdosta, realizing the importance of the Southern and the rural vote to their getting elected. And we must continue to push. We've gone from the poll tax to the 1964, when the Civil, the Voter Rights Act was passed to this point. Now they're trying to back it up. But we're gonna continue to fight, we'll continue to do the right thing, because it is often said that a voteless people is a hopeless people. And we continue to have hope, we continue to stand, and we continue to believe that our vote count and our voice will be heard.
Gotcha. Absolutely, absolutely. One of the things that, so it's talking about this here, are y'all seeing enthusiasm in this city? Because that is one of the issues. When you look at all across the country, all of these MAGA-Trump people, all of these nutcases, they are still ticked off that he lost, and he did lose. You've seen the folks changing the laws in this state, Texas, Florida, we can go Iowa, we can go on and on and on. And so are you concerned that, and I've seen the polling data, African-Americans in this particular state, you know, not particularly pleased with the job President Biden has done, his numbers are very low in this state. Are you concerned that many of us are not going to vote, and then therefore, our votes not be counted? Because non-voting also means your vote doesn't count.
Right, well, I'm gonna say this, for Valdosta, we've had a great opportunity, we have a great Democratic local party here, county party, and we've been working hard. And I would say that really, almost all the statewide candidates have come to Valdosta. And so that's excitement, and that know that we're there to support them, and they're here to support us in here. So a lot of them have been several times already. And that's the first time that's really happened, that many candidates coming down on a regular rotation. So, you know, I'd like to thank all the people in Valdosta, even the crowd you have here tonight, you know, on a short notice. We come out and support. If you support us, we're gonna support you. So we're excited in Valdosta, and we're seeing the numbers even today. A lot of African-Americans were there, hopefully they were Democrat votes, but it's very encouraging.
Councilwoman, are you seeing enthusiasm there, out there on the ground?
Yes, I am. And I must agree with him when he's saying the candidates are coming here. When the people see the candidates coming, they think, they know they care. So that's the side, they say, if they care enough to come, then we gonna care enough to go and vote for them soon.
Reverend, how has the religious community been organizing, galvanizing? Obviously, with COVID, folks back in churches, folk coming back, not numbers before, but still this sense of somehow getting back to normal. Are you seeing that emphasis driving souls to the polls?
We are really working hard to encourage our members and our faith community to get out to vote. We've emphasized through the encouragement, of course, of our Democratic Party to facilitate souls to the polls, where we're, as we used to do a few, several years ago, get out in our own cars, take our neighbors, take our friends, our family members, take them to the polls and wait for them to vote, and then take them back home. So we understand the importance, and we are working together to make sure that that takes place.
One of the things that I would, if I have each of you answer it this way, and that is, I mean, I get people, they tweet me and they talk about it, people like, I've already heard these folks say, nothing has changed. First of all, anytime somebody says, "Nothing has changed with us voting," they automatically stupid. I mean, I just, that's just dumb. I mean, it's just literally dumb. I mean, if anybody looks at, you mentioned earlier with the Affordable Care Act, I mean, the number of African-Americans who are uninsured declined dramatically as a result. That's also voting. On my show, I often talk about the work of Biden's Department of Justice, Christian Clark, he's the Civil Rights Division, and the folks, the indictments, the guilty verdicts, how they're sending corrections officers and others to prison for hate crimes, for beating prisoners. That's also voting. And we could go on and on and on, you know, but it's amazing how a lot of folks just simply don't understand connecting the dots. And so there's somebody out there who's in this city, who's in Valdosta, who's in this state, and they're saying, you know what, all these folks the same, nothing's ever gonna change, I'm not interested in voting. What would you tell that person?
I would tell that person that, when you look at, we hear people talk about the federal and state elections and those political figures. But I would say to make sure not only you vote on your national and state, but you gotta make sure you vote every single local election, because that affects you more than who the president is. So I would encourage them and let them know that, hold your political leaders accountable. A lot of people don't know, especially some of the younger black guys, a lot of times, they'll say, "Well, why should I vote?" It won't matter. Guess what? When you're having a situation with maybe your child support, you're getting your driver's license, all these state agencies that are affecting you or you feel like affecting you, you call your state representative. Reach out and say, "Look, I'm having this problem." So therefore, if you vote for the right person, and you're also educated, understand what their job duties are, then it will help you. So I tell everybody to vote at every single election.
It's funny, I saw a video, it's audio today, and there was a sister, Nikki Barnes, out of Florida, and she was in this chat room, and this brother who was organizing, he was going on and on and on about reparations and how it's not happening, and what folks are not doing, and he was going on. And then she said, "Who's your state rep?" Had no damn idea. And she said, "How, she said, "How are you gonna argue for somebody to give you something and you literally don't even know who your state rep is?" Just totally embarrassed him. And so, of course, I had to amplify, put his name out there, embarrass him further. Because it was, and that's the thing, that's the thing that gets me, because like even now, I have all these folks, they're hollering tangibles. And I gotta walk them through this. And I tell them all the time, well, first of all, you actually can't get something from a candidate unless they win. And then, even if they win, if you've got, how many people in the city council?
Seven.
That means you need four votes.
Yes.
It's a majority. So one person actually can't guarantee you that, but you still need the person to win. And so it's amazing the number of people who somehow believe, "Oh, I'm gonna get this, this, this in the campaign," without realizing, no, that's what happens if they win. That absolutely drives me crazy. So when you're out there, how do you explain to the folks who say, "I want to see this, 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 but then I'm not gonna vote?"
Well, I tell them, it's a process. And I'm glad you said that, because you are absolutely right, what you're saying about how once they vote for you, they think you can do it all, whatever they ask for. Well, I tell them, it is a process, but what they have to do is get out there, get your vote, get your candidate, get that candidate to vote for you, and then they can, I guess you can identify with it, you make it kind of like a personal relationship. If I vote for you, there are things we want, but I cannot, we cannot always do one individual thing. But you've got somebody who can fight together with others to get it done for you. But the point is, you have got to get out there, make, like you said, make your representative responsible. Call them out on certain things that you asked for them to do. Your representative then can talk with the other candidates or other council members and kind of work a relationship with them so that they can work to get the things you want. And that is how people have got to learn to do. Don't just say, "I'm just not gonna vote" and be, give up on it. I am gonna vote, I am gonna go through the process, I am gonna work with my candidate. Stay involved, y'all. I am gonna work with my candidate to help to get the things that I want done. A candidate, one person cannot do it, but one person can vote for that candidate to work with the other council members. And I have seen a lot of what you said happen, it does happen. People, please, don't give up on hope, keep trying to vote. Look for people who you respect, someone, look at what they've already been doing. Look at the person, the candidates that you want to get out there and vote for, and push them, vote for them and support them. You have always got to give your support as well.
Reverend, I'm gonna ask you this here, and y'all can clap, y'all guys, fine. And so I will refrain from cussing this person out. But this person, Byron Grimsley, on our YouTube page, he goes, "Typical Democrat speaking on why we can't do something for black people." See, that's the other thing that cracks me up. First of all, like, what's the percentage of black people in Valdosta?
Fifty-two percent.
So 52%, right?
Yes, sir.
How many black people in the city council?
Four.
Oh, four.
So there are seven city council members, there are four black people. So when y'all voting, y'all doing stuff for black people. Well, hold up. If you're voting on something and it's for the residents, are they not black residents?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I'm saying that is because, again, it drives me crazy when I listen to these people who say, "You need to do something specifically for black people." And I've had to walk these idiots through to explain to these idiots, and I'm calling them idiots for a reason, to understand that when you are an elected official, you literally cannot do something specifically for one group. Now, there may be an issue where that group is affected more than anyone else. So you take the student loan debt, the portal opened today. African-Americans are impacted by student loan debt at a higher rate than other groups. Was Biden's, was loan forgiveness, was that specifically for black students? No. Is it going to help black students in a significant way? Yes, that's helping black people. The Affordable Care Act, help if we, if, based upon percentage, more of us are uninsured, and we're now an underinsured, and we now can be insured, that helps black people. But there are people who literally are walking around, and in their mind, they actually think, "Oh, you, as an elected official, you can only do something specifically for black people and nobody else." Can y'all explain that, that's, you can't do that as an elected official?
That's why it's a process, and you have to tell them that too, you know, yes, we want what you want too, but you just can't, they limit it just to you. We kind of have to look out for the overall group. And that's why I said, support your candidates, find somebody who's willing to work in your area, work what you want done, and work for them in that way. But no, it can't be, we have to work for the majority, for the whole group.
How do you, Pastor, how are you explaining that? Because again, I get this constantly on social media, where people are thinking that that's the only way that I'm going, it's not, y'all. That's just literally not how the process works.
I agree with you, Roland, in what you have said, because I look back, as you said, about the Affordable Care Act, and how we said, well, those that didn't agree with President Obama, but what he was doing was something for everybody. And we got to remember that when his second term, Congress and the Senate was primarily Republican. So he pushed very hard just to get that through, and that was something for the whole nation, not just for a certain group of people. But we've also got to understand, even on the local level, if we want something done, we have to start making noise. In the words of the late John Lewis, "Make trouble, make necessary trouble." And so when you start speaking up and speaking out, change will come. Because one of my frustrations has been when President Biden had the money that was sent down during the pandemic, the majority of that money did not reach the black community. And enough of us did not speak out against that. And so they put that money where they wanted to put it, use it, how they wanted to use it.
And this is the thing right here, and I'm bringing my panel back in the studio for a second. And here's a perfect example. This person named Shereen Advance Your Life, who needs to advance her knowledge, because she clearly has none. She writes, "The Asian hate crime bill was specifically for them, why not us?" Shereen, you are a damn liar. I have read this on the air, and I'm gonna say it again to all y'all people who keep posting this stuff, you are a lie. First of all, it was called the COVID-19 Hate Crime Act. Wasn't called, it was not the anti-Asian bill. The bill was passed because there was an increase in attacks on Asians. It was in the intro to the bill. If you actually read the bill, Shereen, which I guarantee you, you didn't read the bill. I'm not sure you can read. But if you can't read, I actually help you out, because I read the actual bill on the air. We scrolled it. There is nothing in that bill that says it is specific to Asians. Not the money, nothing. What does that bill do? It creates a database for hate crimes, for all hate crimes. How do I know? Because I read it. Hooked on phonics. I read it. And not only that, Representative Shannon, I'm gonna go to you right here. And the other thing is this here, for the simple simons out there, when Congress passed the bill, when black churches were being burned, guess what was in the introduction? The number of black churches being burned. What did the bill cover? Churches, mosques, synagogues? Was it just black churches? No. What was the purpose of the bill? The space of fires at black churches? Same as the so-called Asian hate crime bill. That was mainstream media calling it that, because that was the impetus for it, but it was not the Asian hate crime bill. This is why y'all gotta stop listening to these other fools out here, these YouTube doctors, these YouTube academics, who don't bother to actually read. Representative Shannon, you're there in the Georgia Legislature, speak to that, because again, these people go, "You can only pass a bill for black people." And I keep telling them, that's not how city councils, school districts, county commissioners, state boards, Congress works. It doesn't. You can do something that targets a group, but you can't say, "Oh, this is only going to be for African-Americans, only for Hispanics, only for..." You just, you can't. Go ahead.
Shannon left, she had eight o'clock out.
Is she there? Representative Shannon? Omakongo, go ahead.
Well, I think it really comes down to, and you've brought this up so many times, this thing about sophistication. We don't get involved in really understanding how things work at a granular level. We get caught up in everything that we see in this social media space. And quite honestly, the closest we get to these elections, the more and more people are bringing out these theories and these... theories and these ideas to keep us divided and keep us away from the polls. I'm so happy that you're down there in Valdosta, actually listening to people actually speaking about what's happening. You've got brothers and sisters in the audience united, because for those of us who live outside of Georgia, we're hearing all of these rumors about how Stacey Abrams doesn't have support of black men, and then Roland's got to remind people every single day that the number-one voting block for Democrats is black women, the number-two voting block for, for Democrats is black men. And so when you talk about this misinformation that you just talked about with these bills out there, if we don't have continual platforms like this, where we can continually challenge the misinformation and the disinformation, we are going to end up losing people at the polls, because like you all said on the panel, just having one person not show up is two votes for the other side. And so we have to be vigilant in doing this, not only on these platforms, but like so many people there in the audience are doing, in the streets, on television, in local news. If we can do that, if we can really crack that, we have a really strong chance of keeping Georgia on a trajectory that so many people in the audience right there tonight and outside in other parts of Georgia have been doing. We can win that state every election, as long as there's no cheating.
You know, Julianne, I got some dude Panther55, all the theatrics is not helpful, inform instead of belittle you old clowns or something else. No, I'm a clown some people, because I, I really kind of get sick and tired of people who trash politicians, who say, oh, ain't nothing happening, we ain't got this, we ain't got that, but then when they need something, that's who they trying to call to get something. And folk don't make the effort. Because, see, if you make the effort to listen to lies and conspiracy theories, you can actually make the same effort to listen to the truth. So Panther55, I'm gonna call a fool a fool. Julianne, go ahead.
I'm laughing, Roland, because you ought to call a fool a fool, and whoever called and said, don't belittle people.
Julianne, you're muted.
Don't belittle people. Okay, how do I get off mute?
All right, we got you, go ahead.
Okay, how do I get off mute?
Go ahead.
Okay, but again, basically, some people need to be clowned, some people major in the minor, and in misinformation, it does not serve our community at all when people spread these lies or have no knowledge of the political system. You asked Representative Shannon, who apparently went away, but the question you asked her was really appropriate. If you understand how laws are made, you know full well, you can't pass a pro-black law. We will, you know, you have to have equal protection. Now, you must, we must pass a law to provide reparations, but that's not a pro-black law, that's a justice law. But in terms of looking at our church burnings, hate crimes, all of that, it's across the board. And predatory capitalism allows people to exploit this hate situation and then to divide us by saying, oh, gee, you did this for the Asians, but you wouldn't do it for us. Done it for everybody. I, I'm so happy, Roland, that you're down there in Valdosta, Georgia, the place where Mary Turner was lynched, black woman who dared raise her voice. But I'm glad that you're there to basically raise these issues and have a knowledgeable panel of local people to talk about it. What the service has been done here is to show Raphael Warnock and his superiority to that man, you know, who played football too long without a helmet, clearly to have a rational thing come out of his mouth. You basically showed with the gubernatorial debate as well, the spoiler role that the libertarian wants to play, doesn't even know what he's doing, and the lies that Brian Kemp continues to tell about Stacey Abrams, which he has no right to do. But these folks have majored, again, in the minor and in misinformation, and so we have to keep putting it back out there, this is wrong, this is damn wrong, and it has to stop. And it stops by, by voting. People have to come out and vote. Don't believe the hype. Reverend Jackson said years ago, there are loose rocks, rocks on the ground. He talked about the metaphor of David taking one rock to throw at Goliath. And throwing that one rock, he basically killed a monster. But there were rocks on the ground that had not been used. That's what the story is of our votes. If you don't vote, you have nothing to say, nothing to say.
Before I go to the break, I mean, this is the thing that I, I just need people to understand because it's kind of real, real basic. There was somebody during the George Floyd protests, a young brother, he said, I'm not gonna waste my time voting, but I'm going to protest. And he was asked, so what are you protesting? He said, I'm protesting to get the policy changed. And the person said, who do you think changes the policies? She said, the root of policy is poly. The root of politician is poly. She said, so if you're going to a march to protest and then you don't vote, all you're doing is going for a walk. That's what people have to understand when you would talk about this concept of voting, how it goes with protest, it goes with activism, it goes with engagement, it all goes together. Speaking of that, I'm gonna go to a quick break. When we come back, I'm gonna talk to Melina Abdullah with Black Lives Matter grassroots in Los Angeles, one of the two LACD council members who refuses to resign after making racist remarks. Well, they've set tents up outside his house since yesterday. He has new neighbors. And we'll talk about that next on Roland Martin Unfiltered on the Black Star Network
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
You know what's on the ballot. It's not just legislation and policies we believe in, it's democracy, our democracy. There's a choice on the ballot between freedom and fear, between cruelty and compassion, between chaos and community, between voting or violence, and the end of rights generations have fought for. The extremists have a plan, a roadmap for a nation where your voice is silenced and your vote is a memory, where they count their votes and cast ours aside. That's why this year, this fight, this vote is so important. Register, engage, volunteer, fight back against the disinformation that is there, and most of all, vote, because your vote is all that stands between our future and theirs.
When we invest in ourselves, we're investing in what's next for all of us. Growing, creating, making moves that move us all forward. Together, we are black beyond measure.
What's up, what's up? I'm Dr. Ricky Dillard, the Quiet Master.
Hey, yo, peace, world. What's going on, it's the Love King of R&B, Raheem Devon, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
All right, folks, welcome back to Valdosta, Georgia. Kevin DeLeon is a city council member in Los Angeles. He was one of the three city council members who was caught on tape making racist remarks. One of them, the council president, Nuri Martinez, has resigned. DeLeon and Gil Sodillo, they refused to resign so far. Well, yesterday, Black Lives Matter Los Angeles began their encampments outside his house, literally, they have erected tents, they are outside of his house there every single day. Joining us is the leader of BLM LA, Melina Abdullah. Melina, glad to have you back on Roland Martin Unfiltered. So something happened yesterday, I saw one of Jasmine Koenig's tweets, I thought it was really interesting. So Kevin DeLeon decided to call some, some Latino brothers to stand with him, then y'all had a conversation with them, and they flipped to y'all's side. Tell us what happened.
That's right, that's right. So Kevin DeLeon has been running around making racist comments, not just racist comments, but engaging in anti-black work to undermine black power and black communities. So Saturday night, he had called us just 25 black people yelling. So 25 black people showed up at his house yelling. And then Sunday, what he attempted to do is really stoke a racial divide, and he thought he was gonna call in Latinx brothers to come and intimidate the mostly black women who were there with our children, and they were there to intimidate and antagonize. We decided that as they were trying to poach some of the media coverage we were receiving, that we were gonna go and listen to what they had to say. And they were saying things that were clearly misinformed. They were asking why we weren't at the border in Texas, and they were saying that we only stand up for black people when they're killed by police. And so we listened to them, and then we talked to them for nine minutes and 27 seconds. And we talked about, yeah, we weren't on the border in Texas because we live in LA, but we were on the San Diego border. And then we talked about how, you know, we stand with black people who were killed by police, but if they come to our demonstrations, which we have every Wednesday, we also stand with brown folks, brown families whose folks are killed by police. And we said, we're not there to be anti-Latinx, we're there to check anti-black racism that's coming from one of their leaders, and we wish that they would help to check that. By the end of that conversation, all 10 of those brothers came and hugged us, one of them who was clearly black, as well as being Latino, he came up and he said, my grandmother is black. He put his arm next to my arm, and he said, see, I'm black, too. And, you know, we wound up hugging, and two of the men were actually moved to tears, and all but one pledged to come back and support us and demand that Kevin DeLeon resign.
So, again, he's resisting this. The interim council president has stripped him and Sodillo of their campaign, excuse me, their committee post, but those two still are just refusing. And so how long do y'all plan on staying out, outside of his house?
So we said, we're gonna camp out until he gets out. And that's exactly what we planned to do. He's being extremely petty, repeatedly calling police on us. You know, we are not violating any laws. And in fact, what's interesting is that his neighbors are coming out in support of us. His neighbors are baking us cookies, they're sending pizzas, they are letting us use their homes to charge our phones. They're really supportive of what we're there to do. And so, you know, we're gonna be there as long as it takes to get Kevin DeLeon out. He has to be held accountable for his anti-blackness. We can't allow him, these are not just a matter, this is not just a matter of hurt feelings because some people said some hurtful things that pain us. It's also about harm, it's also about minimizing black community, it's also about why they were meeting in the first place, which was to gerrymander, to draw city lines, to draw district lines that strip black communities of all of our assets. And so we're there to say that we're not gonna let him continue to not just hurt our people, but harm our people. He has to get out, he has to step down, and as long as it takes, we'll be there, and we're gonna use every tool in our toolbox, showing up to city council meetings, showing up at his house. He will not have a space of peace until he gives us some peace by stepping down from his post.
All right, Melina Abdullah, Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, we appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Then, folks, I want to come back to our panel here, let me thank Omakongo and Julianne for being on today's show, for joining us as well, thanks a lot. I want to get final comments here. We have a week of early voting here, and so the push over the next week, how, what are you doing to maximize black turnout? Because one of the things that I keep saying, and this is, this is often lost on us, is we talk about, oh, black turnout was 50% or 60%. Yeah, but the first thing, if you have eligible number of people, and then they're not registering, and then if they are registered, then we're not maximizing our numbers, maximizing our numbers, then actually, we are losing power. I argue that at a bare minimum, black turnout should be 75% of all eligible voters, or at least all registered voters. So are y'all looking at precinct by precinct, looking, who didn't vote last time? Is door knocking taking place? I see folks out here, Divine Nine, I see alphas, we always start with alphas. Don't, don't hate, always. Jesus was an alpha, y'all know. So, so, so what I'm always challenging all Divine Nine members is that, are we out in our colors, knocking on doors, going door to door? And so what is happening here in Valdosta to try to maximize black turnout when it comes to this election?
We have a coordinated effort here in Lowndes County, working through the state, through, we have our county Democratic chairman here, Adrian Rivers here, he's an alpha, so we got to give it to you. But we're working together.
You ain't got no choice.
Right. So we're working together in the Divine Nine, like you say, Ronald Screen's done a great job of helping coordinate everybody together. So we are working hard from the state level, federal level, canvassing, getting literature out, we've been having special events here where people can come out, eat free food, and encouraging the people to come up. The biggest thing we're trying to do is educate the voters. We're educating the voters. So I'm happy with our Valdosta, we're on top of things. I appreciate Valdosta.
And I want to say, too, that we are having a community march to the polls. What, it's gonna be October the 22nd, the community is having everybody, anybody in the Lowndes County that want to come and march to go to the polls this Saturday morning at 8:00, we're asking everybody, please come out. We're having all these type of marches, we're educating people, we're trying to connect them, we're talking to them all the time about that. I agree with the D9 doing a lot of things, they've had a lot of incentives that were, they have been talking to people, we've been going out, doing a few things. Yes, we wear our colors when we go up and do things like that, too. We want it to be visible, we trying to get everybody connected. Go vote, take somebody to vote, educate you on why you're going to vote, who you're going to vote for, and it is a necessary thing, because don't let somebody take something from you that you deserve. You own, this is something we should own. We own this, it's mine, I'm gonna do it. And that is what we have been trying to do. The community here in Valdosta is, almost every day, we out talking to people. Just to let you know that this is a community center that we have, we are always telling these people, go vote, we ask them, we show them. Black Lives Matter has been very supportive in getting information to people, telling them where you go to vote, showing them, let you know that, you know, we had a lot of precincts that were changed, for the people, precincts that were changed. We've been really trying to educate you on, get to know your precinct, where it is. We've been giving out flyers so they can call places to find out about it as well. We want them to get an early start on it, and we want them to go. And when they go and vote, tell somebody they went and voted, tell them what it was like, and go with them again and take them.
Pastor, are churches organizing with their buses, getting ready for Election Day, transporting people to the election polls? I mean, look, first of all, it doesn't matter who they vote, but what is happening there with transportation, because that's always the issue as well. We talk about people getting there, voting, but how are we moving folks there? What's happening there?
Yes, sir. Again, we are organizing, again, under the leadership of President Rivers with the Lowndes County Democratic Party. We're stressing the importance of the souls to the polls, where our churches are using their vans, their buses, their individual personal cars, whatever it takes to get our members, our community members, and neighbors and friends to the polls to vote. It's very important that we vote, especially that we vote this time, because we have a slate of candidates that, that are worthy of making a change in Georgia, and if the time is now for us to make that change, and so we are pushing for that. And I want to thank you, Roland Martin, for coming to Valdosta and showing the importance of the vote of Valdosta. Thank you.
So what I want us to do is this here, I, I don't want us, whether folks here, if you're across the state of Georgia, or you across the country, I don't want us just to tell people, you need to vote. We need to be talking about why, what are the issues, what is actually at stake. I got these new fools out here who are upset with me, you know, these little trolls out here, they call themselves New Black Media, but they were scared to show their face, when I talked about what the Republican agenda is. And the person was upset with me because I had something to say about that, and I said, well, either you with them or you against them, which one is it? But it's amazing how they want to answer that question, because, and I'm very clear in terms of what the agenda is. It is not an agenda that is going to benefit black people. Period. Now, there have been Republicans that have actually run, run and actually who have governed evenly, that actually benefited African Americans. I will give anybody that credit. I know what's happening in the United States Senate, exactly what's gonna happen there, that it is not going to happen. And so we should be educating people, connecting the dots, getting them to understand that if you don't vote, shut the hell up. I mean, look, you could complain all day, but to me, somebody complain, that's like, that's, that's like pipes busted, bursting in your house, and all somebody do is complaining. Are you gonna pick the phone up? Are you gonna pick the phone up and call the plumber? What we gonna do? I mean, are you gonna sit here and just complain all day? And so complaining with no action actually solves nothing, you just run in your mouth. And so we must get folks to understand, and let me be real clear, Trump, MAGA people, oh, they energized. They're energized. And I'm gonna say it again, Biden Harris won this state by 11,000 votes in 2020. I can guarantee you, without even looking the numbers up, that there were more than 11,000 black people in Valdosta alone that did not vote. So the reality is, if you maximize the vote just in this city, you literally could be determining who wins statewide offices. And that's the thinking that folks have to understand. And so, so we appreciate it, Ronald, we appreciate it, thanks a lot, despite being a sick one, it's all good, I'm just messing with you. All right, so we appreciate everybody coming out. I see y'all in y'all colors, Greek, non-Greek, glad to have y'all out here. Tomorrow, we're gonna, yeah, I see y'all Delta, stop it, we see y'all back there. Okay, throwing y'all a little sign up, come on, yeah, 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 okay, all right. Sigga Gang Rogue, got you to sit down. Okay, AK, sit down, okay, everybody, everybody trying to get a shout out. I was somewhere last weekend, a brother, he was I O'd, he was bad, man, you never shout us out. I keep forgetting y'all. So, man, come on, come on, so, what? Truth to it, that's what happened, I told him that. So again, glad everybody came out tomorrow, we're gonna be in Savannah Control Room, y'all should have the graphic, I sent to y'all in group me, it's called the Community Kickback. So we're gonna be there, Community Kickback for Raphael Warnock tomorrow, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Lake Myers. I'll be broadcasting the show from there as well. Who they got me talking to? Let me shout their names out here. I'll be talking with Sabria Scott, Gary Gordon, Zalonia Williams, and Ben Polite Jr. And so looking forward to chatting with all of them. So again, that's tomorrow, Lake Myers, so looking forward to that. And then I'll be back in Georgia next Monday and Tuesday, I have no idea where I'm gonna be, but I'll be back in the state then. So we certainly appreciate it, thank you so very much, everybody watching, thanks a lot. Don't forget, download our app, the Black Star Network app, available on all platforms, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. And of course, in a couple of weeks, we launch our 24-hour streaming channel. We first time on Amazon, we're gonna be on other platforms as well, so really looking forward to that. And again, support us in what we do by joining our Bring the Funk Fan Club. Check in Monday orders, go to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash app is Dollar Sign, RM Unfiltered. PayPal is RM Martin Unfiltered. Venmo is RM Unfiltered. Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. For the folks who are watching, get my book, White Fear, How the Browning of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. People keep asking, what's your book about? I kind of made it clear, you could get the book, Ben Bella Books, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, Indiebound, Bookshop Chapters, also Books-A-Million, Target, you can download it from Audible, and also you can, of course, order through your favorite black bookstore. And I didn't do this, I was in Swayne's Borough last week, I didn't bring the books, but a bunch of folks there actually had their copies, so I signed them there. So I did bring some books, I'll be selling them and signing them over here as well for the folks here if you want to get one. And so folks at home, get your copy as well. Thanks a bunch, I'll see y'all tomorrow from Savannah, Georgia, as we continue for the second day of early voting in Georgia. Y'all in the hall, always in the show, y'all take care.